It's called a meeting order. Please stand for the flag. Flag.
The United States of America and to a republic for which the stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We will call all board members of present except for Ken, Steve, and Dave. I think you've been coming in well. We have proper notification of an open meeting. First action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the February 14, 28 through regular board meeting. Second, we have a motion, a second question on the minutes. Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. Next item is resolution to approve the bill list, but also included in your packet. We have a motion, a second any questions on the list. Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. Next is communication that comments with members of the board. Moving on to superintendent's report.
I have a very nice superintendent's report standing back there. Mr. Steve Melzer is a teacher in our business department and he also is the lead advisor for our DECA program. And we have some DECA program students here to share their successes and talk about perhaps next steps coming up. So, Mr. Melzer, would you like?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stella Gary and I currently service the president on the Arrowhead DECA chapter. This is Hannah Beal and she serves as the co-vice president of special events and that includes our Hawk Fest and the marketing nights that we put on. Over there is Morgan Dom. She is also the co-vice president of special events. Standing next to us is Emily Chu, the South Campus Coordinator. And next to her is Abby Fickell, who is our vice president of competitive events. So tonight, we're just going to talk to begin with about the smart goals that we made for Hawk Fest.
So to start off, one of our smart goals is sponsorships. And we wanted to raise at least 23,000 sponsorships. We wanted to set a goal for selling wristbands which help us with inflatables and for carnival games and food and activities. And we set a goal for $8,000 for the event.
And then for overall profit, we want to raise at least 24,000.
So we conducted a SWOT analysis based on what we learned and what we earned. So this included our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And we're going to go into detail about what those all were.
So some of our strengths was our brand name, the variety of Hawk Fest, and then as well as charity. So to start off with the brand name, it's in the eight years of making, which is DECA. It's known as a student-run, fun, family-friendly environment that's available to the entire community. So it's charitable, inexpensive, safe, and fun for all ages. And then for the variety, there is much that we can do at Hawk Fest and we have something for everyone that can enjoy. So inflatables, carnival games, food, drinks, and then there's a football game going on as well, as well as local sponsors. And then Hawk Fest goes to charities. So this year, we had 22,000 in profits that we're giving back to charities, our school, and our community. So that includes MDA, HAWS, DECA scholarships, as well as Arrowhead clubs. And at DECA State, we rewarded first place for raising the most money for MDA and sending them to summer camps and we rose over $9,500. So some of the weaknesses of the event that we can look on to improve, so they're not necessarily bad. One is management. The event is student-run and can lead to confusion in leadership and workers due to lack of experience. So this is mostly some business classes that help out with the DECA event to help like get involved and become part of the DECA leadership team as well. One of the other thing is lighting. So it's tough to have such a large area lit at night. And then lines, lengthening lines can cross between each other and then it just kind of gets overcrowded. And then tickets and wristband to eliminate confusion between tickets and wristbands. Tickets are for carnival games and wristbands are for inflatables. Every year, we have many opportunities for us to grow Hawk Fest. One of those is creating community togetherness by bringing in local sponsorships to help us raise the event. And that brings in just friendship and togetherness and unity of the community and helps us just bring in more businesses to swarm. We had an attraction called the Spelio Cave. It's kind of this truck that you can, like kids can crawl through. I don't know how it works, but it looks really fun. And it's one of our most popular attractions there. And we had to figure out, did we want to let it be a wristband where they could go through as many times as they could, or if we wanted to charge it as a ticket thing? And so we had an opportunity to grow our profit in that sense. For t-shirts, we had the opportunity to grow profit in creating various sizes. This year, we offered a long sleeve shirt. And those sold out fairly quickly, but then it ended up being very, very hot on the day of Hawk Fest. So people came back and bought short sleeve shirts. And then for... We also have a great opportunity to support charities and to expand our brand name by giving our profits to charities like MDA and HAWS, which we love to support. And also by bringing in entertainment, also expanding that community togetherness by bringing in local dance groups, school bands, school musical acts. So that's really fun for everyone to experience, as well as like touching different areas of entertainment. And also by inviting these groups to perform at Hawk Fest, they also bring their families, which brings more people to the event and more profit to get to these charities. Also with every event, you have your threats, which we like to deal with as best as we can. One of those being competition. One this year that we experienced was with Broadway Company. They had their opening night on the same night as Hawk Fest. So we kind of had to deal with moving around attractions and dealing with different numbers. But we still ended up having a very successful event, as did they. We also have to deal with different sporting events. There were state soccer, volleyball games and tournaments around the same time that we had to work around, as well as working around the schedules of student volunteers that worked that event. We also have to deal with weather, as you can tell, since it's an outdoor event. Last year, it was actually postponed because of rain. So we always have the risk of rain to deal with. And also, hot weather can always affect people coming to the event or cold weather, as a matter of fact. And just people have different food buying habits, they don't want to stay outside as long, it's too hot or too cold. Also, as well as safety, there's people walking everywhere, even the Hawk Fest. There's kids running to and fro. And then there's the inflatables you have to deal with that are being run by students. So you've got a lot of fresh gear, but I think we've been trained by Mr. Melzer very well to handle these situations.
So on the hand of attorney on page three, there is an income statement. So we are very proud to say that we raised a total income this year of $46,226. And after we subtracted all of our expenses, we gave a net income of over $28,000. So you're probably wondering, where did all of this money go? Well, we managed to donate over $22,000 to the community in different Arrowhead clubs. Some of our major donations were to MDA, which was $8,000, and to HAWS, which was $3,000. In addition, we donated to the Arrowhead Girls Basketball Program, Arrowhead Key Club, Broadway Company. And finally, we managed to donate $4,000 to DECA marketing nights.
So marketing nights are run by the sport and entertainment classes. I was the coordinator for our Hollywood marketing night, which was held at the boys' basketball game. And this included Rocky Rocco's Pizza. We had mascots everywhere. There was decorations for Hollywood themed. There were games, lots of attractions. So we really just wanted to bring in the community again. There were free t-shirts for students. And it's a really fun time for everyone to come, enjoy the game, and just get a little bit extra out of it.
So next was the DECA Disney Christmas marketing night, which I was the coordinator of. And this is personally my favorite theme, just because it was fun with all the little girls running around for youth basketball night. And then we also had hot chocolate, build your own hot chocolates, marshmallows, mints, and everything like that. But also, we gave out 250 free t-shirts to the first few students. And then we had write a Christmas letter or make a wish. And then it was Arrowhead against Conaway, and that's huge rivalry. So that's always fun to watch. And we have a DJ going on, so music and entertainment. And we also bring local vendors to bring their mascots and they do a little dance at halftime. And then we bring down the youth basketball girls. They have lots of fun and it's a great time for families and get together in our community.
So after marketing nights, we began to prepare for our competition. For DECA competition, there's three modules. First is districts, which occurred on January 6th. Then we had state this past week, March 5th through 7th. And we're looking forward to internationals, which is April 21st through 24th. And it's going to be held in Atlanta, Georgia. So an overview of DECA competition, which is kind of the other side of DECA, if you think of it as community service and competition. There are different events that we have. Here are a few of them. We have the principles of business administration. You have individual series events and also you can compete as teams. And then there are also projects that you can compete with your chapter or individually your pairs. To recap our state experience just a little bit, we had 30 competitors from Arrowhead go to state, which is the most we've had in recent years. And we ended up getting 17 students who qualified for our international competition. And that included five state champions. And while we were there, Arrowhead also received seven different community service awards for all of the work that we've done this past year, including the top MDA contributor in the state, which combined our marketing night and Hawk Fest contributions totaling over $9,500.
So the DECA theme, the international DECA theme this year was limitless. And as you can see, we have done limitless things this year with our Hawk Fest, our marketing nights, and our competition. So I know that's kind of a lot of information we threw at you guys. Does anyone have any questions to start off with?
I have a question. Qualifying seven people for the competition, for the national or international competition in Atlanta is really impressive. Do you know if that's the highest number, or how many years has it been since there's been that many? If I remember right, last year was 10 or 11 and I thought, that was amazing. 17, that's so impressive.
Yeah, I know, yeah, last year there was 11, that went. So this is definitely like a big significant increase. I don't know off the top of my head the maximum amount, but it's just like a large amount of people. Because to qualify for ICBC, for those who don't know, you have to be in the top six of your event. And it's pretty hard to do when sometimes there's like 40 or 50 kids competing in one event.
So congratulations on that.
Good job, girls.
I would like to, I'm going into a business role. We do individual role plays at districts and state. And I did it in human resources and management, that's what I want to go into for an occupation. So that was always fun to feel touched base to that. Yes.
I have to say though, to be honest, this is, I mean, here, like, this is 20, 23, 24 years. And this is probably not the largest group in terms of being friendly, nice, dedicated, passionate, going from freshman to senior years and all my years. I just am afraid to go to graduation because you'll probably be deteriorated with the seniors that are leaving. I can say that. That's just really nice that, not only are they talented, but they got the Arrowhead way, they were properly respectful, responsible. And I'm just not saying that that they're here, I'm not saying just in front, I say that to everybody. Now, there's a lot of expectations. I do have high expectations for them, so sometimes that can get in the way a little bit, and they know that. But I do appreciate that all they do. Without them, obviously, we couldn't do all this. So it's just not these five girls. You know, we've got a large number, you can see with the 17 going internationals. So we went, this is going to give a plug here. If anyone would like to help us, we're looking for people to judge and let them go through their run-throughs for nationals. If you could listen, I know that Dr. Meyer and some of them will listen to some of them, but we would love to have you listen to some of the presentation to help them. Because we're not going there just to participate, are we, girls? We're the do best. Follow us on Twitter and Instagram, too, don't forget.
Are there any other schools that are sending this many kids to the international competition?
Typically, schools like Badger High School does very well. Now, their program's grades nine through 12. So it's kind of a little disadvantaged, even though we've experimented now with freshmen and sophomores. You can see, we've got some freshmen going. So we're trying to build a freshman level. You know, there are some schools like La Crosse, Holman High School is very, very good. But we're definitely probably the top five chapter in terms of numbers. What they do though, it's a little, the numbers are skewed a little bit. If, we've got some students that qualified in two events and they like to go in one. So what happens is they pick one and then the schools, whoever took seventh place gets to go. So you're gonna, I'm being a little competitive here, but there's schools that have a few more, but they had a lot of seventh or 10th places that got bumped up. So I give them a lot of credit, but I just, we had 17 and none of them, they all finished in the top six. So that's why, you know, very confident and it's just gets, it's a little emotional once in a while how they did, so.
They should be very proud of themselves.
I think we should give you a lot of credit for what you've done in the 27 years that you've been here. You brought this from the very bottom to the very top. You know, I know you quite well and I'm very proud to be associated with this DECA and you and the programs that you have done for the community. It was a great job.
And I want to do a plug for Stephanie Blackman, who's our first year. She is the South Campus Counselor. And I can tell you, the first year, she's doing great. And without her, I mean, things are a lot easier. Keeps me with the paperwork and all that stuff that we just love to do. So I want to say that hats off to her as well.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today.
All right, moving on to our video report. Nothing to say. Let's move on to finance and legislation, Craig.
All right. If you want to look at your letter of report from the speed from the 28th. We'll see if you weigh over a number of the student fee schedules. Also, the use fees, student fees, we'll see those in your packet. Most of these things were costuming the same or had very slight increases. We add for plus or minus inflation, just to treat it. This is pretty standard. Also, I don't know if anybody has any questions about these schools. There's really good questions apparent. We also were updated by Steve on the budget development process and where we are right now.
Sure. We are, as far as where we are with the budget development calendar, we had our meeting on February 28th with the finance committee to review the student fee schedules and some other enrollment projections. We do a five-year financial planning analysis. We reviewed some of that. And that's kind of an analysis that puts together all of the, you know, the state aid numbers, the revenue limit numbers, student enrollment, things like that. Gives us a projection going forward for five years. As far as the budget development process, we are in the middle of putting it all together. The, we have a meeting on March 28th as a finance committee that at that point, we will present the initial run of initial draft of the 2018-19 budget. So there's still a few things we have to work out and working on some, you know, the health insurance cooperative, things associated with that. Buildings and grounds supplemental budget, that's becoming a challenge now with all the projects that we have that, that we need to do from rooftops to rooftop units, roofing, you know, things of that nature. A lot of infrastructure that is coming to do in the next few years. So we'll have a budget for you to take a look at on March 28th.
I'm afraid I got a little ahead of myself. We should go back to the facility schedule again. We would recommend that that be recorded.
I move up here, approve the facility use fees.
Oh, second.
Motion, second, any questions on the facilities? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries.
Likewise, for the student fee schedule, are you going to accept that as?
Motion, second, student fee schedule, any questions on that? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries.
We also considered the flexible benefit plan, you will, this section 125 of the plan, the benefit of our staff, we should choose to use it, you can see that on that page, we should show them there, that there were two offers. There was a three-year contract, diversified benefits services and best effects. diversified benefits services in the Lord's bid. We are also a work company and we would recognize that they, we continue to work with, they have a better job than we have, and we have heard complaints.
So moved to accept that as the full price for the service?
Motion, second, any questions on that? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Both.
Then we have discussion action on the contract for transportation with Doulson Transport. The main thing there is changing from a rolling five-year contract, we're going to automatically to a submitted five-year contract. Evidently, no one has a reason to act through it that way. And they can see, I think it was a series of whatever, and they just, Doulson had no objection to that.
They did not, no, yeah. And we've got, currently, there's four years left on the rolling contract. And this will bring the contract to a five-year conclusion. And it would have a end date, and we're not rolling every year, we're through interaction. And there's some other language changes that we worked through with cooperative members in Doulson Transport. I know there's one question on insurance that we had at finance committee meeting. And if you look in your document, that section seven, after talking with Doulson, their insurance was actually more than what we had put in the contract. The contract was minimums. But they actually have a $10 million combined insurance coverage, which is more than above the state statutory levels that are required to be held by a bus company. So I think with that, we're in really good shape with insurance. They've got a $10 million limit they missed. Arrowhead is an additional insured. And we also have a $8 million umbrella insurance policy that would potentially kick in if something, if it was on any kind of accident.
Can you clarify, you said there were four years left in the rolling horizon plan? So is this saying those four years plus another five, and it makes it nine, or it just goes back to five?
It's a total five years.
Five years.
It will terminate on June 30th.
Just for clarification, since we don't want to take the pen.
Steve, I'm kind of envisioning this negotiation, thinking you sort of use the Donald Trump style. You know what, if you're going to change it, you're going to make it double what these guys asked for, and we're going to have so much to do right here.
It's even more than what you had earlier.
So, yeah, I think we're.
Okay, they have a motion to approve the contract with Doulson.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second, any other questions about that? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Both.
And Steve mentioned earlier, our next meeting is on March 28th.
William Brown, Seattle. Yes, we met back a few days ago on the 7th, just to bring you, bring you up to date. If you remember, a year ago, there was a group of people who were interested in building a facility in software field for players and the like. Contractor who was on the original thing a year ago kind of backed out and there's a new contractor who has stepped forward, take over. We didn't have a lot of the details at that, at this meeting, but we will be meeting on the morning of the 11th of April to look at a little draft and some of the numbers. Again, the idea was that this project could not be with tax dollars. It would be all donated. And so we'll have a much more detailed report for you at the 11th of the meeting. The next item we had on, on the agenda was the West Gym Floor, which is an artificial type turf, rubber. It's starting to deteriorate and that the replacement cost is around $350,000. We don't really have $350,000 in the budget. So we had Kevin Lipson go to several contractors to see what it would cost to repair the bad spots so that they were safe as far as players were concerned. And the end product was that to do the repair and get rid of the bad stuff, because there also are some things there that are in the category of prehazards as far as chemicals that are a part of that floor. And so basically, the cost is projected to be about $15,000. And that would be done during the summer of this particular year. Money that had been in the budget for the replacement of the floor will be carried over in the funds for another year and then at the appropriate time, that floor will be replaced. Now, that floor will probably stay as an artificial turf because it is used for so many areas. You play baseball, you can play golf, it's gymnastics. So it is a very, very versatile floor and quite an important thing in our total bracket.
So all three pairs take it for a year or a half?
About at least a year. And we're kind of looking at that maybe in 2019, the floor could be replaced. And again, how the budget goes. Well, we hope so. Then, third item was the preliminary draft as far as the building and grounds capital expansion budget plan. And if you remember, what we have taken is projects and we've put them in a prioritizing plan from project level one, two, and three. Each year, things move around from maybe two to three, or three to four, or three to one, or something like that. This year, there were about 20 items on the list that were in the priority one. What happened though was, obviously, we didn't have enough money to really look at all 20. So we ended up prioritizing to take the top nine. And in the top nine, I guess I won't go through all of them, but one of the key things is that we are, you know, in the program of Project Lead the Way. And we have done the project at South Campus to bring in manufacturing representatives and get the curriculum going so that, you know, the kids will leave that program. Well, now, when they're done with year 10, we don't really have the kind of facility and program that we need at 11 and 12. So the major portion of the buildings and grounds project this coming summer will be to enhance the curriculum and the facility for Project Lead the Way. And what this will amount to is some remodeling of the existing North Campus shop areas and there will be no additions to the building, anything like that. But, you know, there are different and better ways of doing things. And one of the things that this will hopefully open the door to is that some of the equipment that is in there, like vertical glaze and all that kind of stuff, that's 1946 military material, that aquatics army surplus. And it's not really the kind of stuff that you can convert over to technology world. It's still analog. So that will be in it. The other thing that is unique is that that portion of the building at North Campus has never been air-conditioned and that the unit. never been air-conditioned, and that the units there now are about 45 years old, so a part of the budget will go towards obtaining those facilities to meet the code requirements that will be associated with the equipment that Project Lead the Way will be using. So that's kind of the big project as far as this particular summer is going to be. And the goal is that, I think it's September 7th or 8th, they will be done with that particular project that is be ready for the actual school year. So that was one of the big things. Also introduced was a plan to do something with the maintenance buildings. Maintenance buildings are the two pole shed type of things over by the old barn. They are pole sheds, in that they need some repair, roofing and things of that nature. Also, in that discussion came up the idea of, well, the old barn is really not too useful. Number one, it isn't high enough, we can't get the snowplows and things like that in there, and the mowing equipment, and it's starting to crumble, it's almost 100 years old. So we're looking at the process of potentially tearing that down. Unfortunately, the paneling in that are, have asbestos in it, so the asbestos removal is going to be a significant part of that. So that's a project that will be looked at and probably be a part of the recommendation that we'll give you next month. Then, the other thing that we talked about in the top nine are some things about the security. We do have a very secure building for most of things, but there are newer and better things. Some of those cameras are, you know, like 15 years old now, and they don't do the kind of work that the present products do, so we'll be coming back with the recommendation of probably improve the security so that, you know, our kids are as safe as we can possibly, you know, make the building. Those are the basic things, and we'll be meeting again as a committee back on April 11th on Saturday.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
You know, because I brought up the topic of security, specifically with the welcome centers and how they're kind of set back from the doors, and anyone can really walk in and run down any hallway. I was just wondering if we've ever done a safety analysis, like had our insurance company come through and make recommendations, or the Waukesha County Sheriff come and walk through?
Well, there was, didn't Epstein Ewing do something when we did those entryway? And that's kind of a part of the security plan as to why they were placed where they are?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it was a security analysis, though. I mean, as far as, you know, the design of that with the entrances that we have, have, that was the best option as far as, because those entrances are very wide open, and that was the best design that we came up with at that time.
But I think the other thing you have to remember is that those people who are in those welcome centers, they're equipped with radio equipment and direct blinds that go to the police officer who is on duty and to the administrative offices, sure, and anybody could come in and, you know, run down through that area. However, I guess the vigilance of who's in the welcome center and the like is very important, and that those people, they've been kind of handpicked, and they've been trained, and they've been working with the police department and with our in-house police officer to make sure that there is a communication process there. And, you know, I guess, I'm like you, I'm always kind of a little Mr. pessimist or pessimistic in doing, have we done enough? I don't know if we ever can do enough. But at least we're vigilant, and we're trying to make it as safe as we possibly can.
Al, are the, or may anybody here, are the people in the welcome centers monitoring cameras, that looking out, people hiding behind all the approaches and so forth? So if someone that looks suspicious is approaching, they at least have some surveillance warnings?
Right, they have monitor screens right at the desk, so they, there's four or six camera shots always showing, and they just continually rotate. The other thing I would comment on is our crisis response team that meets at least annually and sometimes more. We consult with local experts or even state experts, police, emergency, fire folks. And just after recent events, when we met, and then I had a few phone calls, or I made a few phone calls, just asking about, because there were several people that brought up, we don't have a buzzer system, should we? And the comment, or the conversation that I had with this particular person who was with an emergency unit, they said oftentimes, if you sit back and watch buildings with buzzer systems, they can, not always, but they can be a sense of false security. People will buzz, and, you know, I don't want to say a statistic of nine times out of 10, because they don't know that that's statistically accurate, but frequently, someone buzzes, and they just, the person in the office just pushes the release, so the person just walks in. They're not saying, hello, what's your name, what's your business here? And then this gentleman said, and quite honestly, the bad guys aren't going to say, my name is Joe Schmo, and I'm here to be violent in your school, or, we also have a, you know, so I don't know that buzzer systems are foolproof, I don't know that anything is foolproof. We also have a campus that, for a high school, it's much more like a small college campus, where kids are moving between the buildings on an hourly basis. We've locked all the doors around the perimeter except the front entrance, so we have security in that way. Sometimes kids don't like it because they have to walk around to the front door, but it's a safer way to be, and it could be quite problematic with a buzzer system and kids waiting to come in, being buzzed in, very similar to a college. Every building that you go to on a college doesn't have a buzzer system to go in and out. I don't know that that eases some of the peers involved, especially with current events, but that's, you know, that's how we stand at this point, and the experts that we consult with don't seem to have a fear in them, or we're not getting recommendations for immediately restructuring our entries.
Well, we could still do a safety analysis, though, the insurance company, I think that's a free service that they will provide, and just do a walkthrough and check everything. It wouldn't harm us, you know.
No. Can I see your hands?
I would say, I appreciate your awareness, but an easy thing is to take and put up a less dealing class, make the entry a lot more like a, I think, visit prison rather than high school, and I'm grateful that resisting the temptation to spend money on things that look more secure and aren't, in fact, bringing the security to reality. Responding with other tools and awareness of the people coming and going, I think does two things. It forces us to have responsible eyes on the problem, and also, I think, it's a vital thing, and approaching it, but an act towards all of those things.
Is there, is there any? If there's no doubt, I'd wonder if we could have one analysis, is there a problem with that, or if there is?
And there is, there is, I have a thing to link to it, but there is, there is experts that do that type of thing, you know, they do threat analysis of schools, of businesses, and things like that, so I'm not sure if you're connected, or if you're actually government.
Yeah, I'm not sure if our insurance company have a threat analysis evaluation. I'll check with them.
But they might have something like that, because they come in every year and do a safety check as far as weather aspects, and maybe this could be a spin-off now because of all of the talk and what's happening in the community.
Yeah, those are risk control analysis, and then obviously, there's, you know, worker comp, you know, analysis.
I would think anything extra we can do, that's to assure that everything is as good as we can get and as safely possible.
Well, you know, and these people who are at the welcome window, if you don't have your dog tagged on, you know, they're, they're going to be saying, our mate went over here and, you know, doing their job. So I kind of have a lot of faith in those three or four people.
There's been a couple times when I've come in and they've been there.
Yeah, yeah, just like sometimes when you need a police officer, they're not there either, so you can't be all over.
Right.
But I think we do a pretty good job with watching for the people who might be the undesirables.
Let me do something, Dr. Tyer, he's a resident, he's spearheaded a lot of that stuff, so he has the information, let me reach out to him and see what he has.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
He had a particular group, and he had trained people that are able to do that facility threat analysis for, like I said, schools, businesses, high target, nuclear plants, you know, stuff like that, so.
That sounds great.
Yeah, let me just reach out to Dr. Tyer, so he can give us some guidance.
So, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that you do Alice training here at school. I'm just wondering how often you do that, and does the Waukesha County Sheriff come and work with the staff when you're doing that training to go through things? Because I know the Waukesha County Sheriff will come in and work with schools.
Right. Our school resource officer is actually a Waukesha County Sheriff's Department deputy, so right on, not our employee, but we consider a part of our staff. He does that kind of training. He works with our crisis response team. Our plan, we've just met recently as a crisis response team, and our plan moving forward is to do every two to three years, a more thorough training of staff, because we know that staff turns over, and you don't remember all of the deep learning. So every two to three years, a more thorough training in August, part of our August in-service at the start of the school year, and then a refresher on an annual basis. So for instance, I think it's this coming March 28th, during that early release Wednesday, students leave a little early, our professional staff has what's called professional collaboration time, and so Officer Fryer will do the refresher, Alice training then, and then the more thorough training in August.
And I guess as a compliment to the Arrowhead staff, I have a freshman, and that day of the threat that was here just a couple weeks ago, I had a group of boys that when we came back to get our backpacks, the boys in the car said that all the staff was very calm, and they all seemed to know what they were doing, and I think put all the kids at rest, so, and at ease during that time, and that's a compliment to everybody at Arrowhead.
Thank you. That's an important part of truly staff training, is to try and remain calm, and for students to know, follow directions of those teachers, or what you're hearing from administrators over the P A system, because you can't, you can't foresee every emergency that could happen, and there's those of us that are in charge of figuring that out, and the authorities that come in and help run investigations in the process, and we can't practice every, a fire drill, the alarm goes off, the kids just go, it's this routine. You can't do that when it comes to an intruder threat, because you never know what's, the person could start out in the building, the person could be outside the building, the person could come in the building, they have to be ready to follow directions. And that type of calm attitude of teachers is going to go a long way in the case of a real emergency to help our students.
And I think another thing that you mentioned is that we have a real good working report with the response team through the county, and that they're in here, the kids know that the dogs are in here, the kids know that they're in the building when they're here. So that's word of mouth, and that kind of spreads quick, and that probably, you know, is, is, you know, they have a good communication system, so, you know, I hope we're on top of it, I hope it never becomes a problem here, but hey, only the Lord knows.
Right. Let's move on, please. Personnel, we have a meeting scheduled for March 23rd at 7:00 a.m. Policy.
We will have about six items on that policy.
Policy reports, W A S C.
I don't have anything of special nature, whether it be a few words, so just kind of some seminars that are coming up in the spring now on different subjects related to school operations. CSO is, again, in the process of doing work with new rules relating to licensing, getting license for teachers or people who want to be a teacher, which is kind of up in the air, because the D P I hasn't come out with their parameters as to what this is and that is. So that's the big thing, because the demand of personnel from the 45 schools that make up CSO has increased in terms of teachers that they want to get through CSO, so they're, especially in the machine, you know, world, a lot of those people are leaving the school program, they're going into the private sector because there's more money, things of that nature, so some areas are getting to be very, very difficult as far as getting people with a proper license, so that's our big goal right now. That's it.
We're going to do business, employ transactions, we have one resignation package.
So moved to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
Motion seconded. Any questions on that? Hearing not all, favor or state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Excess group contracts, there's two appointments.
So moved to appoint a little few people to existing positions.
I'll second.
Motion seconded. Any questions on that?
There was, the assistant marketing person was pretty difficult to find, I think, or challenging.
There were very few applicants, but we're hiring a superstar, who had been a teacher and a teacher leader in Hartford, and when she heard that this position was open, she was very interested, a couple of her friends work in our building and have heard about Arrowhead, so we're typically, if a teacher resigns mid semester, we were quite fearful, and the candidate pool isn't strong that time of year, but we landed in a really good spot.
Any other questions? Hearing not all, favor or state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Next item is discussion and action under 2018-2019 Occupational Therapy Services, Section 60301 Cooperative Agreement.
So recommend that we again participate in that program.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any questions? Hearing not all, favor or state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Next action, item is discussion and action to accept donations from Mr. Mullet, which was part of the package, $30,000.
So moved to accept Mr. Mullet's generous donation to the base function.
I second that. Motion seconded. Any questions on that? Hearing not all, favor or state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any future agenda items? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion seconded. All favor or state aye?
Aye.
Both. Thank you, everybody.